Okay, call to meeting, call to order.
So long day.
Call to order seven o'clock PM, June 10th. Tuesday. First in camera session, none. Treaty acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are signatories of Treaty Five and that we reside in the traditional territory of the Nsichu Yisi Cree Nation. The school district of Mistree Lake is located in the community of Thompson in the province of Manitoba. Manitoba is located on the traditional and ancestral lands of the Niito Innu Cree, Dennisoulin Dene, Meti Inuit, Asinenu Oji Cree, Inishinaab Ojibwe, and Dakota Oyata Dakota Nations. The school district of Mistree Lake remains committed to honoring treaties in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. We are all treaty people. I have regressed tonight from trustee Anderson. We have before us the approval of the agenda. Can I have someone move we accept the agenda for tonight's meeting? Trustee Nicholas Saw, seconded by trustee Humby. All those in favor? Passed. Were you here last meeting, MD? Okay. Approve adoption of the minutes from last meeting, May 27th? Can I have someone move that we accept the minutes from last meeting? Trustee Sharker, seconded by trustee Young. Any comments before we vote? All those in favor? You were there? You were there, okay. Passed that. I know why I'm so diligent counting votes tonight. Delegations and presentations, none. Business from previous board meeting, none. Superintendent of Human Resources and Policy Report.
Just basically in the throes of trying to hire, I, there are a number of positions that are posted here. Just a quick glance, there's probably been about six of these that have been filled since I wrote the report. It's coming along. Again, it's always challenging. I just wanted to highlight that I developed a citywide plan for the utilization of schools as muster points for staging transporting evacuees. In the event that there's, wherever in a situation here in Thompson where we have to evacuate our community. I gave, so I utilized the template, then I gave it to each of the school administrators to utilize, to modify it to fit their schools. So I asked them to include a communication plan for their school, a list of volunteers and alternates who are willing to support evacuees until they can be transported safely to a safe location. And as well as in these plans, an inventory of the resources available in their schools. I.e. do they have an operational community kitchen? Some of them have cots from camps. And you know, some of them have a supply of certain amount of food. So I asked them to include that, all in their site plans. Resignations and retirements. Zoe Vetta submitted her letter of resignation effective June 30th. She started with the district in September of 2018 and spent her career teaching middle years at Westwood School. Jennifer Bye submitted her letter of resignation effective June 30th, sorry. Ms. Bye started with the school district in September of 2016 and began her career teaching at Wapenok. She moved to Riverside and then returned back to Wapenok. She is resigning from her position as an E-Lit teacher, which is the Early Literacy Intervention Teacher at Wapenok. Nikki Dixon submitted her letter of resignation effective June 30th. Ms. Dixon started with the school district in 19. She spent her entire career teaching early years at Westwood. Angela Wolf submitted her letter of resignation effective June 30th. She started with the district in 17. She taught grade six at Bertwin and she's resigning from her position as a youth failed teacher at the Boys and Girls Club. Julyde Ketchmar submitted her letter of retirement effective June 30th, 2025. She started with the district in 1999, so she has 26 years of service. She worked as an educational assistant for the majority of her career at Artie Parker. She's retired from her position as an educational assistant assigned to the Artie Parker off-campus classroom. Carla Hickaway submitted her letter of retirement effective June 30th, 2025. Ms. Hickaway started with the district in September of 1995, so she has 30 years of service with us. Throughout her career, she worked as an educational assistant, she worked as a district facilitator, purchasing clerk, maintenance administrative assistants, school administrative assistant at Artie Parker. She's retiring from her administrative assistant position at Westwood School. Just on behalf of the school district of Mistree Lake, we wish all of our, all of those that are moving on or retiring, all the best in the future.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, hearing none. Superintendent of Educational Services and Programming Report.
I've submitted my report. Just a few highlights. Transition camps were canceled due to the wildfires, so we had a little bit of free time. So we've been providing supports over at the rec center for children that have been evacuated from their communities. Today was our last day. We won't be returning. Frontier will take on that if necessary. We do plan on having transition day camp. We're planning those for the 23rd and the 24th, and we're going to have them back here in the field. Just a fun day for grade eights. Nutrition plans have been submitted to the province. That was 1.16 million dollars. Elders and traditional knowledge keepers plans for next year have been submitted to the province. That's $100,000. Planning for National Indigenous Peoples' Day is underway. It's a school-wide event, two gatherings. They're, in the event that we have poor air quality or rain, it will be canceled and there'll be no rain date. Letter from the Minister of Education, so they accepted our calendar, so we've released it publicly. The note does indicate that they're reducing the number of instructional days by one day, resulting in a total of 195 instructional days. So that's done. I did attend an attendance professional development along with some other folks. Some of the interesting pieces that came out of that were, one, on essential data and having the mix of the qualitative and quantitative data. The importance of parent contact. Counseling reports, home visits, student shadowing, having attendance teams, doing some deep digging. The importance of student voice, developing strategies, and then conducting empathy interviews. Finding out the story behind the numbers rather than just assuming that you know and that each student is an individual. For us as educators, we need to come from a place of humility. We need to be nonjudgmental. Staff attendance has an impact on student attendance, which I thought was, says something about the importance of staff being there. Focus on a time when students felt safe and connected to the school. And this is critical for attendance improvement. What motivates kids to go to school? We need to find out why and you know, it's not always the education piece. It might be the clubs, it might be the sports, might be that individual T-shirt nutrition, but we need to find those things out. And then we need to remove the barriers. We need to remove the overgeneralizations. We need to review our attendance policies. We need to have continued engagement, regular monitoring and tweaking. And we need external-facing data. What is the media saying? What are the images that were portrayed? Marginalized students need to advance equity and not place blame. Share positive student voice and make it a call to action. And then I attended the Indigenous response to school attendance and that was more around land-based and students needing to be grounded in who they are. And this was a group that was from Australia. So it was interesting because there's a lot of parallels to intergenerational trauma, residential schools, to what's happening here. So they talked about the importance of land-based, the impacts, the impacts of parenting. Dealing with issues as a community, meeting with families, very much like our community. Spoke to superficial engagement versus the attitude of putting it into action. So you know, are we who we say we are, it's really important. Education center versus Indigenous community centered, and we need to look after each other. Advocacy without placing blame. And I really like this quote. He said, "There was a stackload of kids looking for connection."
Stackload.
Yeah, it was, it was an interesting session. And since this is my last board meeting, I just wanted to, I guess, do some highlights over the years. I've been in position at the board office since 2010, 2025. So I just wanted to, I guess, say a few words. So I've done a lot of committee work over the years. I've sat on Mass executive for two terms as a Northern Director and one term as a member-at-large. And then another two-year term as the Chair of the Indigenous Education Committee. I've sat on premier's advisory council with the former government. Indigenous Education Directorate Advisory Council, formerly ADAC, now IDAC. I worked for many years on the Indigenous education policy. The final document is the Mamatuaswin. It was named many, many things until we finally came to the Mamatuaswin. Every time the government changed, document had to change because everybody wants to have their seal on that. I was fortunate to co-host the first gathering with over 800 attendees. And at that conference, we had two workshops that were provided by the district. I've sat on the Community Schools Committee and that work was on purpose criteria and programming. Started with one community school, now we'll have four in Thompson. I've sat on the Building Schools Students and Parents Committee. I have sat on the AAA. We just finished reworking that document in March. I sat on the Framework for Learning as part of that team, provincial team, right up until, I've just let them know that I will be retiring. And the Framework for School Leadership, I've also sat on that provincial team. Positions that I've created over my time, I'm not going to talk about the positions that were deleted. I'm going to talk about the ones that were created. So the Family Outreach Coordinator position. Two and a half community connectors with a new one coming onboard at Artie Parker in the fall. Family Summer Programming, elders in the school. Mental Health and Wellness Coordinator, the Media Position. Off-campus Mature Student Program, six Numeracy EA positions through Numeracy Support. The Indigenous Resource Library. Moving from Reading Recovery to ELI and the Off-Campus Junior High Program, which is still a work in progress. We'll have a new teacher there next year. We're going to be looking at students in the next couple of weeks for that program. So with any program to be successful, it's about the people and the positions and resourcing those programs. I provided a number of workshops and presentations over my time. Many Treaty Education, two-day CP training, Framework for Learning, the SDML Calls to Action and Land-Based Learning. The most notable would be presenting at the Cultural Proficiency Institute in Ventura, California. Which the dollars were provided by the TUAS, the Thompson Urban Upregional Strategy. I also attended the Indigenous Education National Congress on Rural Education in Saskatchewan. The WHIPSI Conference, which is the World Indigenous Peoples' Education. I was able to go, I was asked to present along with the province, so that was in Toronto. And then we provided many CP workshops for Mass, MTS, the SBA, Masbah, the Health Region Ballet, Hydro, the District, and the RCNP. I did receive a Women of Distinction Award. I was nominated by a former school board member. I have received the Indigenous Educator of the Month through MESL. Training, I've done a bit. The FAST training, which I can now facilitate. I have my WMS training. I have my Nonviolent Crisis Intervention. I have my Cultural Proficiency Train the Trainer. I have the Cairo's Blanket Facilitator Training. Emergency First Aid, Food Handler Safety Training, Respect in School, Respect in Sport, Treaty Education Facilitator, Crisis Response Training. Framework for Learning Provincial Team, Framework for School Leadership Provincial Team, and WMS. I've been fortunate enough to, we've had some publications in Mass. So on three occasions, I co-authored Education to Activism, and that was part of our making, no, yeah, that was our Making Education Work Project. Families and Schools Together, and Learning on the Land is More Than a Field Trip. So those three have been published. I did write the MNP, the Myers-Norris-Penny reports for the required three years, which you know were 30-plus page documents. I've written all the district plans for the last 14 years, district pilots for the province, the elders and traditional knowledge keepers. Which we had two elders in our schools prior to the elders and traditional knowledge keepers. That is now part of this $100,000 that we receive. The Educating for Action and the Family Outreach Coordinator, I've told you before that you know, were one of two school divisions. That pilot, that Louis Rial is the other. Finally made some headway on transportation. The School Board of Trustees did support the purchase of a van. And then we do have a bus that dollars were provided by MESL. So hoping that those carry on. We, we, I, us. I work very closely with the Curriculum Services Team and we created the Indigenous Protocols Document for Staff. I think I've shared that at our education and programming. Just because people always have questions on how to do things and sometimes they're too shy or they're not sure. So we have a document that they can access to get them started. Summer Programming for the Families and Community Schools, our transition team, which has been running for a number of years. Which are responsible for the camps promotion down at Zello, Grade A Core Competencies. And managing large budgets as well as all of the additional grants. So I guess I would just like to say thank you to the committed Curriculum Services Team for their dedication to education. These folks work above and beyond what is required of them. Literacy, numeracy, students and families, they do it all in a good way. Their values and will allow them to see beyond challenges and barriers. They truly put students in the center of education and make it fun too. I will truly miss this group of humans. They are my work family. Thank you to all the staff who have been open and willing to do their best for students. The extra commitment and willingness to remove barriers for students did not go unnoticed. The district is very fortunate to have you. My request and concern for the school district of Mistree Lake is to remember that Indigenous education is for everyone. It can't be offloaded to a few. We have a long way to go until we see all of our students being successful. We need to examine and resource the challenges, find the strengths to celebrate, communicate, educate ourselves, and invest in the success of our students. We need to check our privilege and get into the thick of the process, be a part of the solution. It takes everyone with good hearts and the best of intentions to move forward. I've committed 28 years to the district. I enjoyed many of those years, especially when it comes to seeing progress and change. Change is hard and thank you to everyone who believed in change and supported along the way. My challenge has been working through the barriers and I really hope that people can work through this together. Public education is meant to be the true equalizer in society. My last comment has to be about kids, kids in the center. Education should provide all students the tools and opportunities and supports for them to succeed. It is about true equity. It is about abling and not enabling. Ask any grade one student what they want to be when they grow up. They will tell you they want to be a doctor, a nurse, a teacher, a trapper, a basketball player, a mechanic, a pilot, to be happy. The sky is limit, is the limit for their aspirations. The goal of education is to provide students with the supports and opportunities for them to be successful. For them to find Minopimatisewin, the good life, I would say.
Wow. Thank you so much, Lori. You've done such a wonderful service for the school district. Anybody want to, just to have any thoughts before we move on?
I want to just thank you for all of your hard work and dedication over the years and I wish you nothing but the best in your future and retirement.
Enjoy your retirement. I don't know how long it's going to be, but.
Some will never retire. Yeah, well, thank you so much, Lori. Secretary Treasurers Report.
Circulated in the chapters is the Check Register for the month of May. Included in the Check Register, accounts payable, payroll-related items of $1,667,669.22. The accounts payable for May totaled the process was $2,397,288. Teacher payroll of $2,286,440.41. And our non-teaching payroll of $938,510.23. The recommendation at this time is that the expenditures for May 2025 in the amount of $5,622,151.52.
We have before us the recommendation that the expenditures for May 2025 in the amount of $5,622,151.52 be approved. Can I have someone so move? Vice Chair, seconded by trustee Young. Any discussion before? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Expenses year-to-date as of June 3rd. Our school year on June 3rd was, is 90.6% through the school year. Our expenses are tracking at 87.8%. Expenses year-to-date total $44,76731. Those are tracking well. The financial dashboard remains unchanged with our June 30th projection of $1,628,208. We received our updated provincial annual funding announcements today. And the adjustment that is included in it aligns with our budget for June 2024, 2025. So there'll be no further adjustments at this time for the surplus. Breakfast and snack programs, year-to-date funds, we have spent 58.4% as of June 3rd, $104,603 of our snack programs at this school.
Any questions for the Secretary Jupin?
I'll allocate the budget, nutrition program for the school. So like, as a parent, I get an email from the Westwood School, so their fund is low. So they send an email to the parent that they cannot provide any snacks for the kids. So my question is, we had enough money, but how is school didn't get enough fund for that?
I, it was wrong to my intention and we reached out to the administration, Superintendent Peterson, all of them as well. There's some additional expenditures that they have going till the end of the year that was not reflected in the system. But we have had the administrator forecast expenditures till the end of June. And we provided, redirected nutrition, or nutrition, snack and funding to all of the schools. So that's, I believe that we know that it was tracking from the school community, that the snack program will be provided for the end of the year.
Any other questions? Hearing none. New business, Westwood K-8 Elementary School Rebuild. The RFP for the selection of an architect for the design specifications, tender process, and contract administration for the Westwood K-8 Elementary School Rebuild, closed April 17th, 2025. An analysis of the four submissions received was provided by Nell Construction Consultants. The lowest return bid, meaning all of the RFP requirements, has been submitted by StanTech. The recommendation before us is that the Board of Trustees award StanTech the Westwood K-8 Elementary School Rebuild project for the fixed fee of $1,768,400 plus applicable taxes. Kelly, did you want to speak to this before we move and discuss, sir? Can I have someone move that we discuss? Trustee Nicholas Saw, seconded by Vice Chair. Open for discussion.
So we had developed the RFP analysis for the design. The intent is to have this, the successful firm work in conjunction with the school district through the construction and tendering process of the school. With this being an insurance rebuild, we will not have the capital project support from the province. Those personnel are assigned to provincially funded projects. So here at the district, not having that expertise in the management of large construction projects. We included in the request for proposal, the design as well as preparing the tender, awarding the tender, and managing the project. There was four bids officially submitted. We had gone both invitation to six. One bidder was removed. They haven't met all of the requirements for the RFP. Bringing the lowest bid in at Ciantech. The other two bidders were MCM Architect, Inc., and Raywan Architecture. We have worked with StanTech in the past. They've always been assigned on all of our provincial projects as long as I've been here. We have good relationships with the individuals. They are available and ready to start as soon as we can set a date. At this time, once we have approval for the tender award, we will begin to set up stakeholder meetings, which shall occur shortly after the beginning of August.
So we did discuss this in finance today. Does anybody else have any questions? Anybody else? No? Okay. Okay. We push to the vote. All those in favor? Carry. Item number 1112, Borwin Bylaw, 0126, first reading. Borwin Bylaw 0126 is required for the provision of the district's operating line of credit, $4 million, and the Visa card, $30,000. For senior administration and school administration, the bylaw is renewed on an annual basis. It covers one fiscal year. The recommendation before us is that the Borwin Bylaw 0126 will receive its first reading. Can I have someone so move? Trustee Young, seconded by Vice Chair. Any discussion about the bylaw? Any question? Hearing none. All those in favor? Correspondence, we have in front of us correspondence for graduation speaker. Artie Parker, graduation speaker for action. Artie Parker's looking for, oh yeah, and trustee Humby says she wanted to be the speaker. Who did this go to? This is, this is from Charmaine? Can you, I could type Charmaine. Let Charmaine do, Ikey will do it. I'll do it. Ikey's sticky. I'll just recycle the one from two years ago. We did mention, we talked about it, spoke to it. We were of two minds. Some said it would be better maybe to preserve space because it's a smaller venue that only minimally we attend. In other words, maybe myself and someone else, or we could have those available. What do you folks think?
I think it's tentative, right?
Yes.
The location is going to be.
The 20th of June? Okay, so it's not 100%? So this is a tent. Okay, okay. Well, let's, let's say minimally, I'll be there, definitely, obviously. But maximally, it will open up to everybody if, is you think that the TRC is even possible? Maybe? Maybe so, eh?
It might be.
It could be.
Okay, well. So it will depend on the venue. Yes. 12.2, Manitoba School Boards Association. The e-bulletin is there for your perusal. The CSBA. The C S B A, for those of you. Did everybody get the email from the C S B A today or only Lori and myself? Or maybe it was just myself. Um, the C S B A pivoted today and they announced that they're not going to have the national convention in July in person. They're gonna go virtual. Mainly because of the province's directive yesterday that they don't want people engaged in nonessential travel to preserve, uh, the, uh, the facilities for the hotel for evacuees and those families in need. So, um, the C S B A, for those of you following, uh, it was supposed to be July third to the fifth, was, uh, the convention in, um, in, in Winnipeg. They are, the, the block of rooms reserved at the Delta for the M S B A and for the C S B A have been canceled and they're advising, uh, individuals to, uh, to not travel to Winnipeg and that will do it online virtually. So those of you interested who would like to attend the convention virtually, that's back on the table if, if, if you want. Yeah, and that just happened today. So how it will happen operationally, we're not sure yet. But that's, uh, I myself am not going to Winnipeg, obviously, and I think Trustee Henderson is also going to cancel.
Not a trustee.
Oh, yeah, superintendent.
Not yet. No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
That, that's our next innovation. Yeah, well, the chair, chairperson Henderson.
Um, yeah, no, and I'm not even sure what the status will be of our presentation.
So there's a lot of moving pieces right now, um, of, of, around this convention. But the moving pieces are not going to Winnipeg. Okay, Governance and Leadership Framework, twelve point three. See a letter here. Uh. Uh, you can read it on your own time. I don't see, uh, any need right now to discuss this. Uh, we can circle back around to it in a future time if you, if you guys want. Uh, thirteen, Committee Reports, thirteen point one, Policy Committee.
I don't have access to it.
So I can know the problem. So does it not have the copy?
Do you have access to it?
I do.
Yeah, but I think you have the minutes to yourself on the show as well.
Yeah, I think he's. Saying he does not have personal access.
Oh, right now?
Yeah, because of the changing of the.
Do you wanna get one of them?
You want me to read it? Here we go. No, that's May. I have the agenda for the committee.
I don't think so, because I haven't had it.
I'm not seeing it.
So all we did is we reviewed policies.
Fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, uh, we reviewed. There was no changes. I think there's a few S's we need to remove out of it.
Yeah.
Uh, we reviewed policy proceed, or sorry, reviewed procedural bylaw review to determine where edits, that's where to be made to reflect the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six organizational structure. And, uh, we don't have a meeting set till September.
September.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Uh, thirteen point two, Education Programming Committee.
Um, education programming.
Met on May twenty-seventh. I myself was not able to attend that meeting and I don't have any minutes for the meeting. I'm assuming the next meeting will take place in September.
I'm actually supposed to have minutes on Thursday. I'm Friday.
Take a look. You know?
They could be sitting in space.
They could be. They could be. Yeah, I don't think.
I had given it to her because I knew that I was.
You get the rec center?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm not seeing them.
We'll get her to send.
They're in transition. Oh, no, wait. No, this is February twenty-second. When was the meeting? Oh, man. Oh, my God.
You're waiting.
My brain is so fried. I might be even reading numbers right anymore. Uh, yes, yeah, please. But Charmaine did get them around, I think, May twenty-seventh. Yeah.
I don't have access to my board documents, otherwise I would.
No, okay, that's okay. That's okay. My brain is not functioning.
Well, I do remember Lori, so I felt like.
Date, um, what she had talked about earlier, what she's done over the years.
Um, yeah. So we did three assessments. We looked at grade nine curate attainment. We looked at attendance data. We looked at the early years evaluation data. So we had a conversation around that. All the schools have been given their data, um, because they're all going into school planning. So it was a focus in on what they need to, to look at, so. And I'm gonna be meeting with Walknik on next Thursday just to go through, um, their school planning because we really do need to focus on the attendance.
Yes.
That's, that's kind of why I wanted to be at this professional development also, just to hear some other ideas. Um, talked about some staffing, so I did hire somebody for the junior high off campus. I haven't hired anybody yet for, um, the Indigenous Perspective Teacher. Um, and looking at right now, hiring somebody for the Early Literacy Intervention. Those are the only three I have on there. That was the update, but.
Uh, thirteen point three, Public Relations Committee. Is that Trustee Anderson's?
Yep.
Okay, I don't think we met anyway.
No, and, and, but there's, there was a year last that. Just that I wrote for last meeting that just kind of highlighted it. Not like activity or, I mean.
Yeah, the money. When the money disappears. Uh, thirteen point four, Finance.
We met, uh. Previously to this meeting, reviewed the expenses as per the Secretary Treasurers' report. Um, we talked about, uh, Stan Tech being the next in line, which we have now awarded the, uh, the bid to. Um, they're, review that they're working on the contents inventory for the insurance. We reviewed through the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five grants and the stackers of state, states that they're in. Um, we brought forward our borrowing bylaw, which we carried through. And we also reviewed that we received our new nutrition grant for next year. And our next meeting will be after restructure in September.
Beautiful. Other committees, any other committees?
Um, our U S W Committee due to, uh, the U S W rep having a lot to do with, um, people involved with fire and, um, that sort of thing going on right now, we're probably looking at moving into the new year, into the fall.
Okay. Trustee Comments. Trustee Sharker.
I would like to congratulate all of our academic teachers, those who have served their best to this board. And especially for our, uh, superintendent Lori Henderson for her dedication and leaving some legacy. I hope we'll see very soon around this town if you are here. Just, uh, give us some news. So what we have did, so we are trying to do our best. Maybe some decision, if you think something is very hard, but we always try to stick to our policies because this policy is met by the board. Don't take anything personally. Everything is what I did to uphold the policy, board policy, board decisions. So another thing, so this is, I think, maybe, I'm not sure if we are keeping any employee exit survey. I saw that, uh, our four of, of T-Serts, so they're working since two thousand eight, two thousand sixteen and nineteen. That means they're not with us for more than five or ten years. So if you can get a survey from the employee to get some, the reason of their resignation, what are their experience working with us, or any suggestions to improvement? And if we can gather some information, what are the reasons? If we can bring something to the board, you can discuss how we can resolve this to keep them in with us.
I, I mean, I've done exit interviews. And I mean, just in light of how long I've been in role and been doing this, I will tell you that I could probably tell you each one of those persons and people and why they're leaving. Generally, it's, it's, they never want to leave. It's, a lot of time it's family commitment. They, they're, you know, their children are young and their families aren't here, so they're moving. Or their parents are getting older and they need to be closer to their parents for care. Um, but, I mean, we certainly can, I've done it in the past where we just do in, exit interviews and have people basically comment on, on, uh, why they're resigning and retiring. In my experience, if we generally have a teacher for about five to six years, we have them for a career. So if anybody's gonna be, um, mobile during that time, it's ju- usually within the first, I'd say five to seven years with the district that they'll move. But other than that, um, you know, generally from five to seven, anything over seven years, we generally have them for, they retire here for the most part. And our turnover rate is, is actually not bad considering where we are. Um, we hire about twenty to twenty-five new teachers, so it's about ten percent every year. It's pretty, it's been pretty stable the whole way through. Yeah, I think there was one year that I hired, like, you remember that year was? Yeah, it was, no, there was one that was like probably in the high thirties. Um, just a, again, there were, there were ebbs and flows, right? So there were times where we hired a lot of teachers, so you had a lot of teachers retire all at the same time because they were all of that age. But, uh, yeah, so. Thanks.
Same thing. Congratulations to all retirees, um, graduates. Um, yeah, I wish them all the best. Lori, um, it was nice working with you, uh, although I've only been here a year. Um, learned a lot from everyone so far and I look forward to learning more. And thanks for everybody's patience. And again, back to the graduates, uh, have a safe graduation and I wish them all the best.
Um, I just wanna say congratulations to all of the Knights of Columbus athletes and a huge thank you to all of the staff who were able to come together and pivot and figure out a way to still make Knights of Columbus happen. Um, I also wanna wish all staff and students an enjoyable and safe summer break. And lastly, congratulations to our Artie Parker graduates and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
I think everybody else has basically said what needs to be said, so I'm good.
Need to echo everyone else, absolutely.
Excellent. Myself included and, uh, thank you to Superintendent for an excellent career. Okay, and she's gonna go retire to Tahiti or some hot beach, isn't it? Okay, questions from the public?
No, but can I make some comments?
Yes.
This is my last.
Yeah, this is your last one, too.
And I wanted to say congratulations on the teaching. Congratulations to Lori in her retirement. You should all the best. And thank you for all your dedication, hard work for the entire district. Thank you to Angela and Kelly for your work and duty as well, the teachers and giving us the mind, you know, and, you know, it's, it's been a wonderful experience. I mean, sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't, and that's okay, because that's part of, part of working together. And thank you to the board for being considerate, kind and caring for the district. Thank you so much.
And thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your service.
For being our, our audience.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and best of support to the new incoming. When does the new executive start?
July first.
July first, okay, okay. Uh, let's see, in camera, can I have someone move, we move into camera? Uh, Vice Chair, seconded by Trustee Young. All those in favor? All right.